Meeting the City of Milton to order. Today is Tuesday, May 16th at 7:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Good job, Inga. Welcome. Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that mo-
So moved.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. There's nobody registered. Item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding a new Class B beer license for Famous Amos Barbecue LLC located at 239 North Janesville Street.
Famous Amos has requested a Class B beer license for their new restaurant operations, which will be located in the former Gophers Bar and Grill, commonly referred to as the Caddyshack, North Janesville Street. They have completed all the necessary background check and responsible beverage certificates and were positively recommended by the Personnel and Finance Committee about 20 minutes ago. And we're excited to have them join our community.
Does anybody have any questions for the Personnel and Finance Committee members that are here? As y'all weren't present for that meeting, right?
What are the hours going to be?
She, that same question came up, Personnel and Finance. Correct me if I'm wrong. 11:00 to 8:00, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, except for Mondays. They will be closed on Mondays.
They're open on Sunday?
And they'll, they plan, their hope is to open around the 1st of June, or tomorrow.
Samples were brought to Personnel and Finance, correct?
There wasn't.
You guys are awful emotional, but...
No, that's right. No bribes were given to me either, even though it says no.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor, the new Class B beer license for Famous Amos Barbecue.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further questions?
The only additional because this is the city's last Class B beer license by local ordinance. There's a local ordinance that restricts the number of Class B licenses. There was one available, and now Famous Amos will have that after an affirmative vote by the council. So any future Class B licenses will have to either be reviewed by the ordinance or denied summarily based on the merits of their application.
Any other further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. Item number six, discussion and possible action on acceptance of a donation of a welcome sign at the intersection of Janesville Street and High Street.
So the Milton Lions Club, they are offering to donate a welcome sign at the intersection of Janesville Street and High Street to replace the current one that's existing that's a little bit in disrepair. The new sign went to the Tourism Development Committee. They kind of came up with the concept of a "Welcome to Goodrich Square" sign, which is included in the packet. And we're working with Sullivan Signs on the design of it and everything. And then the sign went to Parks and Recreation Commission last night, and they recommended approval of accepting the donation of the sign.
I just want to say that this is a very nice donation from the Lions Club, and it's going to look great when, once we get it up.
And the Parks and Rec Committee thought it really fit in well with the historic signage that we have so far in the area of the historic district. So I think it's going to really be helpful and attractive, so.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right. Item number seven, general items. Well, you can do, stay, you can wait till, till other person reports, committee reports, however you want to do it. Are there any general items? I know at one point we talked about changing the team building rules. So would we like that on the next agenda, then?
Yes, please put that on the next agenda.
That the council voted on me for.
Okay, that's, that's a nice.
Maybe this is a place to bring it up. I would like that we would consider as we move forward, not right, right in the moment, but towards the end of this year and into next year, reviewing, having a review of our ordinances in an organized manner. Take one or two at a time, maybe every other council meeting. And we have a small committee or a subcommittee review the ordinance along with city staff and bring forth any suggested changes. Otherwise, ordinances are just enacted, and then they just sit there sometimes for a long time. And they may not be pertinent to today's world, or they may not be, you know, fit in in today's world and the new laws and whatnot. So that's just something I'd like to think about as a council and suggest that we do that at some point.
Sure. Any other general items? Okay. So, we have an event coming up this weekend, right? I think I've been speaking a lot about this event, so much I drew a blank. We have dinner with Lincoln on Friday night, and there will be some of us attending that. So our team building exercise is, what is the one question you would like to ask President And take your time. All right, time's up. Who wants to go first?
How difficult was it to live with your wife and her mental challenges? Or reported mental challenges?
Teresa, do you want to go next? You can pass, and we can come back, but just make sure I don't forget you.
Just how upset was Andrew Jackson that the Civil War happened?
Not great at all.
I can guess that one way. But a long time. 16 years.
All right, so next team building is going to be current events, right? But my head would explode if we had to talk about all the current events in the last 24 hours. My question would be, like, what kept you from not giving up? I mean, his whole political career, he had so many challenges, personal losses and political challenges. So I'd like to know, like, how'd you get out of bed every morning?
Do you have any advice for our current leadership?
You guys have such deep questions. I would say, why did he decide to grow his beard? Is it true because a little girl asked him to? I'd like to ask his opinion on being placed on the penny rather than the nickel or the
I guess I would, I would want to ask him, how often were you able to hear from your wife while you were traveling throughout the Civil War days?
Okay, you have to come back with a response. It's the library.
What was your favorite ice cream?
Chief?
What were your first tweet to be? What was your early life like as you were growing up with your father and your original mother before your mother died?
We've had a few presidents from Illinois. What one piece of technology do you wish you had that we have today?
Good question. Teresa?
If you could be a magician, what's the first thing you'd pull out of this scope?
Got a bunch of comedians here. Okay, committee reports. Linda?
We have our pads, our tear-off map pads are done. They are sent to the printer. And so as soon as we get them, we will get them distributed. And thank you, Inga, for all of your hard work on those.
Anybody else have a committee report? Ryan?
Stark Preservation. Milton House has a lot going on this year as far as different, you know, repair work goes. They just sank a couple of weekends ago. Did some repair work on the actual side of the building. And they have other projects in mind for the year as well. And I think we'll be handing out the walking tour booklets here shortly. And also want to mention the Civil War event this weekend here in town. It is a free event, as we've said numerous times. Free, open to the public, open, rain or shine, we'll be there. So, right there's Milton House. Lots of fun activities planned.
Any other committee reports?
Personnel and Finance, you can see most of it.
Thank you, Dave.
Parks and Rec, we, we looked at a very preliminary, which I brought along tonight, very, and I emphasize, very preliminary, initial draft, drawing of the Storybook Gardens walkway. That's the first phase that we're looking at putting in first, and is, you know, the layout of, the general layout of the site. And the subcommittee's been doing a lot of work along with Inga. And, and we're going to move forward on that, try to gather some information on types of material for the walkway, either concrete of various types, basically. And then, once that's in place, then we can kind of look at funding and, and how we'd start on that phase. And we're going to do this in real phased-in process, not, not everything at once. And we don't want to take away from other projects in the community, so, working to, with Lisa and the library staff and coming up with some real good ideas. I think it's going to be a wonderful facility in the community, so, down the road.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
This is a facility directly committed, but I'm going to use it. Training coming up, a pre-training for anyone that's interested in taking part in it. I encourage you to share with anyone that you feel could have been, you know, someone that could, you know, worked with students, went to school.
I've gone through the, the training, not this particular one, and they're so educational. And it's not made it true, like, if you don't feel comfortable getting on the lock zone, obviously you wouldn't have to. But, you know, you never know when you might interact with somebody and you could save their life. So, it's, it's a real, it's really good to get trained on it. So I'm excited that we're doing this, and happy that we're hosting it at City Hall. And I have these all over the Rock County Human Services Building, too. So I think it is, you know, getting advertised.
Did you prepare enough for the liaison officer to try to get it up?
Yes, I was going to say that, because you'd be amazed what happens in parking lots of businesses. Right? And, I mean, that's very true. And just another thought to share, and I, how important this kid is. We had someone outside of my clinic this last week that overdosed in their car between treatment programs. So, I mean, and we were able to save that person's life, so, you know, it's a good thing to know. You just never know. They were on a break for treatment and went out to their car and used it. So, it's important.
And relapse is very common and expected when individuals are going through treatment, so.
Teresa, did you have to RSVP at all?
We could even maybe send it out to the school district, and they could electronically email all the parents, too.
Yeah, and I don't know if the liaison officer wants to send it out, or somehow.
Thank you. Anybody else?
We, we haven't had a fire commission meeting. That'll be tomorrow night.
Explain that one.
Okay. And I feel like I do need to explain it, because there has been some confusion. As you know, originally, we wanted to discuss the RW contract, the transition team recommendations in further detail, and some other business items. And we were planning on having a joint City of Milton and Town of Milton meeting along with the Fire Commission. And many individuals could not attend that meeting from the Fire Department, and they, they want their input heard. So we tried to reschedule that, and it, we couldn't, for whatever reason, in the next couple of weeks, get that joint meeting rescheduled. So, in all of my wisdom, I thought it would be a good idea just to have a business meeting and get things done that we could get done on the Fire Commission, like the intergovernmental agreement and voting on the chair, very small, very small business items. So, we could, at whatever point we were able to schedule that joint meeting, focus everything on the transition team recommendations and the RW contract, and wouldn't have to deal with the business end of it. Because likely, the intergovernmental agreement and those, you know, will take us some time, and so will those other items. It caused some confusion, because people thought, well, we were just going to move ahead without key stakeholders present on the RW contract and on the transition team recommendations. But that is not my recommendation, and I, even though the agenda has those listed, as a typical agenda does, it is very unlikely that the Fire Commission would actually vote on any of those items without the firefighters present. So I just wanted to clear that up, because there was some confusion involving that. There maybe still is some confusion. But that, that was my intention. The other item I wanted to discuss is that Kerry, Cleba, and I have been going on a little road show, talking about the Civil War Living History Days, and presenting that information to various other boards. So we attended the Janesville City Council meeting and presented, and personally invited all of the City of Janesville and the City Council to Milton. We went to the Janesville School Board and personally invited all of them and presented and the, everybody in the Janesville School District. And we went to the Beloit City Council and presented last night, and invited them and the entire city of Beloit. So, we wanted to go to the Beloit School Board, but they only meet once, so they'll get electronic invitations. And we had a limited amount of time. We couldn't obviously go to every meeting in Rock County, and this is the first year that we decided to do this. So, we'll see. It was exciting to do it. It was fun to interact with all those other elected officials. It's a very short presentation, but I think they enjoyed the, enjoyed the personal invitation handed out to them. And we'll see if we get some other folks from other municipalities coming on Saturday and Sunday. It was nice to present it and talk about the Humanities Grant, and that it was a free event. And so often, cool events like this aren't free to the public, so. And Kerry did a great job, and I was just there to introduce her. So, we'll see how that works. May 25th is the Community Recognition Picnic, and I want to make sure that everybody remembers to come to that, because this is really another free event for the citizens of Milton to come and have a citywide potluck. And the city will provide the main dish and utensils and plates, service and drinks?
Yes, soda and water.
Soda and water. We did not take out a liquor license or anything like that. So, so that is Thursday, May 25th, and it starts at 5:00?
5 o'clock to pick it, and then 6 o'clock for the program.
I'm really excited to offer this. We just suggest that if your family comes, bring a dish to pass for the, for the potluck.
But you don't have to.
But you don't have to. It is, there is no entrance fee of food. But we would love it if you would join us for that. And the award winners were listed in the Courier, and we are very proud to recognize those individuals, and they are very deserving. So, each year, this is getting bigger, and, you know, congratulations to the city for putting that on. Anybody else? Staff reports? Dan?
I've got nothing.
Al?
The only thing I will mention is, you know, obviously, the last meeting was the last meeting for our clerk, Alenda Hillby. We are in the process of doing some kind of internal reviews, looking at potential reorganizations, but also still looking at the possibility of doing a traditional recruitment. It's really a matter of kind of seeing if there's enough flexibility within the existing time and, and workloads for folks to see if we can work it out. It is my hope that at the June 6th meeting, we can have a conversation with the council to discuss what our, either our, our recommendation is, or at least our plan of attack for that. In the interim, LeAnn Schrader has been named the acting clerk to the City of Milton, so if you have any clerk-related questions, certainly get ahold of LeAnn, or you can always get ahold of Inga, too. She's equally as wonderful, so.
And Inga, did you want to just talk about your wonderfulness now, your staff report? Just kidding. Thank you, Inga, for sitting in.
Well, Scott might talk about it, too, but we are still accepting applications for the police officer position through May 26th.
And we also have Johnson Tractor, a little store that's going to have activities in it, and that'll be ready. We also will be done with our donor wall, so all those will be up. So we're looking forward to that. And that is on Sunday, June 4th, from noon till 4 o'clock. We'll have some live music, refreshments, activities, so there'll be lots to do and see. We'll have a drone airshow pretty much through the whole thing as well, so it'll be a lot of fun. June 13th marks our summer reading kickoff. That's always a huge event. We, we have a lot of people coming. That starts at 1:00. And then the teens have theirs following that at 3:00. They'll have activities like, they have a ninja course that you have to make it through, and so lots of fun stuff to do that day. And then June, I'm going to have to look the date up. I think, yep, June 24th, it's a Saturday, from 10:00 AM till noon. Jamie Anderson has put together something called Milton Mayhem, and she kind of modeled it after a city she used to live in, in Iowa, where you, it'll be 7 points in Milton that you ride your bike, and then you do an activity or have to solve something at that. And then you win something at each point when you, when you get through the activity. So that'll be on June 24th.
Is there an age restriction on that?
Yes, they should call the library, really. There's-
We can't have, like, a city team of adults?
You could, you could, totally. What's that? Sure you could. Yep, you bet. And we have a blood drive on May 31st. You can sign up online. If you have any trouble with that, just let me know. Someone tried to do it that way, and they thought they fixed the problem, so it should be okay to sign up online now.
And how did the food truck rally go?
Awesome. We had, I don't know, 400, maybe, people come. We made, it was just great to see so many out in the community together, friends, families together, really making it a fun event. It was bigger than last year, and we're going to have another one in August. Must tell everyone, Gigi's Cupcakes will be there. We had some concern.
Where were they?
Yeah, yep.
They only made 90.
Yeah, I saw, yeah, there were, yeah. So I think parking was okay, so I think that worked out. And it seemed like, you know, between 12:00 and 1:00, it got super busy, but otherwise, it seemed like it was a nice proportional, you know, amount of people coming. So, yeah, that was, that was a lot of fun, so. Next year, we're going to try with music. We'll see.
Yeah, thanks. Chief?
If you follow us on Facebook, you know we have a new school resource officer has been selected. Ryan Schneider is going to be taking over that position. It was probably one of the hardest days of my tenure here yet, trying to make that selection. Had three very deserving candidates and only had one position. So, those are, those are hard decisions to make, and, but I think Ryan will do a fantastic job. The work, did a lot of work together with the union to do some restructuring of how that position is going to work in the future. That went very well. And so, big thanks to the, to our union folks, too, on helping us through that. He'll be starting the position probably the third week of August. We have a week-long basic SRO school that he's going to be attending in the first part of August. of August, but even yet this month, he's going to go up to the high school and do some shadowing with Officer Martin and try to kind of learn some basics before this school year is over yet. So, we're looking forward to that transition and that'll be fun to see his work out there. Inga mentioned the hiring process, I think 25-ish applications so far is where we're sitting, so hopefully we can bump that up. The mayor and I attended a roundtable with the Attorney General in Janesville on Monday. Interesting discussion on a whole lot of topics. I didn't have a lot to say, but several other people did, so.
And we did interviews. Like, did you do an interview today?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
FYI.
I spoke to one of the reporters about that experience, so. And then, just final note, that this is police week, so we're pretty thankful for the men and women who've chosen to do this profession and yesterday was Police Officer Memorial Day and lots of events going on all around. I think Beloit is hosting the county police officer memorial ceremony, I think on Thursday. I can get more details if anybody's interested in that and I think that's all I got.
Yeah, if you could send us an email, that would be great. Anybody else have anything? Anything else? Okay. Next meeting, Tuesday, June 6th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m., unless there is a joint city and town fire commission meeting scheduled between now and then. Item number 12.
Consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 1985-1F conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation which it is or is likely to become involved regarding the Casey's General Store litigation.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous, we'll go in closed session. Okay, we are now back in open session. Dave, are you with us? Okay, item number 14.
13.
Do I have to read that? Okay, we're reconvening in open session for consideration of possible actions on stipulation in Casey's General Store litigation. So, we have a stipulation to review and to vote on. Does anybody have any questions or comments or are you ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the date on the stipulation as August 1st, 2017.
You can approve the stipulation too? Mark, would you like a little more specific motion?
I think if you just want to restate, I believe you're indicating that you'd be a motion to approve this stipulation in order as presented with the August 1st date inserted.
Yes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further questions or comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number 14, discussion of possible action on ordinance number 428, amending section 14-400 parent 1, parent 3 and section 140, 14-400 parent C of...
Code.
Code of, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. Code of ordinances of the city of Milton affecting Class A alcohol licenses and you received a memo on this already.
A move that we adopt as stated.
Second.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, and waiving the first and second readings.
Second and third reading.
Second and third. Oh, jeez, you're right, second and third reading. Would you like me to restate that?
Do you have any, Inga?
Motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance, waive the second and third readings and adopt.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further comment or discussion or questions regarding the ordinance? No? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number 15, discussion of possible action regarding resolution 2017-12, repealing resolution 2014-23 regarding Class A license quotas. Again, you had...
Repeal resolution number 2014-23.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further comments anybody would like to make or discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 16, motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Any further comment or question adjourning? All those in favor? All those opposed, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.